You are watching the broadcast of the El Paso County Commissioners' Court Meetings. Commissioners' Court Meetings are held every Monday at 9:30 a.m. on the third floor of the El Paso County Courthouse located at 500 East San Antonio in downtown El Paso. These meetings are open to the public. The meeting will start momentarily.
Commissioner Andrew Hagerty would like to invite you to his weekly breakfast meeting that takes place every Wednesday at 7:30 a.m. at Danny's Diner located at 4690 Trans Mountain Road. Every week he has a different speaker who will be discussing topics of interest for the community. So if you live in the northeast, west side, or anywhere else in the county, come and join us for the breakfast meeting.
Don't wait in line, pay online. Visit the Financial Recovery Division website at http://www.epcounty.com/budget/financialrecovery.html to make your payments online or find out more about our kiosk locations. We now accept payments on misdemeanor, felony, and justice-of-the-peace cases.
You can now watch Commissioners' Court Meetings on YouTube. Go to youtube.com and search for El Paso County Commissioners or El Paso County, Texas. Subscribe to our channels to see our latest videos.
Did you know that you can save money on the cost of your medications? And doing so is easy. In 2015, the county of El Paso launched a prescription discount card program from coast to coast. The cards are available to all El Paso County residents free of charge and everyone qualifies. You can pick up a card at any county office location, Walgreens, Walmart, CVS, or Target pharmacies, or simply print the card at www.coast, the number two, coastrx.com. Happy savings.
Did you know the county of El Paso's purchasing department is responsible for ensuring that all items and services needed by various county departments are purchased in the manner required by the state of Texas? Whether through formal sealed bids or smaller dollar quotations, the county purchasing team is dedicated to finding the best contracting return on your taxpayer dollars. Additionally, the purchasing department is responsible for the tracking of inventory within the county and properly disposing surplus to public auctions. For questions about how to become a vendor and compete for county contracts, or to learn more about public auctions, please contact us at telephone number 915-546-2048.
The 346 District Court Judge Angie Juarez Barred started the El Paso Veterans Treatment Court Program in 2012 for veterans and active service members that have been arrested and charged with a felony or misdemeanor criminal offense. To be considered for this specialty court, the statutory criteria includes be a veteran or current member of the United States Armed Forces, including a member of the Reserves, National Guard, or State Guard, and suffer from a brain injury, mental illness, or mental disorder, including PTSD, or be a victim of military sexual trauma, all occurring or resulting from military service. Call Sylvia Serna, Veterans Program Director, at 915-546-2119, or email her at scerna@epcounty.com for any information. Did you know that the county of El Paso's fixed asset control and inventory disposal is handled through the purchasing department? Throughout the course of each business year, the county holds live public auctions to dispose of aged equipment, vehicles, furniture, and other items that are no longer needed. To find out about upcoming auctions or to learn more about the county's inventory disposal process, contact the purchasing department at telephone number 915-546-2048.
You are watching the broadcast of the El Paso County Commissioners' Court Meetings. Commissioners' Court Meetings are held every Monday at 9:30 a.m. on the third floor of the El Paso County Courthouse located at 500 East San Antonio in downtown El Paso. These meetings are open to the public. The meeting will start momentarily.
It's 9:36 a.m. Commissioners' Court is meeting in regular open session. Today is Monday, January 22, 2018. Could you please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Let's see, Commissioner Perez will be absent today. The first item is the call for consent. The consent agenda is composed of items-
Ms. Pitzek, I'd like to correct the record. I think it's Commissioner Leon who will be absent today.
And I believe Commissioner Perez's assistants told me that he will be absent today also.
Thank you.
Ms. Keller, right, thank you. And Commissioner Leon also, thank you. Thank you. So we have two people absent today. Thank you. The consent agenda is composed of items 3A through 3R. Several items have been requested as follows. Item 3F has been requested to be deleted by county administration. Item 3H has been requested to be postponed for one week by county administration. There's a correction to item 3K from the county attorney's office. As corrected, item 3K reads, "Approve and authorize the sending of the contract termination letter dated January 22, 2018, #6104142, medical waste, SRCL00485480." It's also been requested regarding item 3N, per, let's see, per administration, to delete item 3N. And I believe that is it. Could we please have a motion to, or, excuse me, are there any other items that members of the court or the public would like to consider separately, please?
Commissioners, any other items? That was a lengthy change to the consent agenda. Motion to approve the consent agenda with the changes that were read into the record.
Second.
Thank you, Judge. Commissioner Perez and Commissioner Leon are absent. Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Hagerty?
Aye.
Judge, Judge Vogt, motion carries. Item 4, resolutions. Item 4A, approve and adopt a resolution recognizing January 2018 as National Mentoring Month in El Paso County, Texas.
Good morning, everybody. It is my distinct honor to read this resolution into the record. I would like to invite our guests to please step up to the podium. Commissioner Leon, this is his item. Unfortunately, he couldn't be here with us today, so he asked me to read this. Whereas Big Brothers Big Sisters' mentors help children build confidence, gain knowledge, and develop the strength of character to succeed inside and outside of the classroom. And whereas thousands of children in El Paso are considered at risk and would benefit from the stable and secure relationship of a mentor provided by Big Brothers Big Sisters to enhance their success in childhood and increase pro-social characteristics and behaviors. And whereas, a partnership between Big Brothers Big Sisters of El Paso and El Paso County helps provide mentoring for El Paso children who are most in need of support and guidance from a caring, responsible adult. And whereas, Big Brothers Big Sisters' mentors push our next generation to shape their ambitions, set a positive course, and achieve their boundless potential. And whereas, Big Brothers Big Sisters' mentoring, in addition to preparing young people for school, work, and life, is also extremely rewarding for those serving as mentors. Now therefore be it resolved by the El Paso County Judge and Commissioners' Court that January 2018 be recognized as National Mentoring Month, signed this 22nd day of January 2018 by the Honorable Members of the El Paso County Commissioners' Court.
Second.
Thank you. Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Hagerty?
Aye.
Judge Vogt?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Good morning. Thank you so much for being here today.
Good morning. Thank you so much for having us. You know, we are so, you know, grateful for the ongoing support of the County Commissioners' Court, and congratulations to you on your, on your post. We have had tremendous support over the years. In fact, your predecessor was involved as a dancer in our Dance for Kids' Sake fundraiser one year. Maybe we can get you one year.
We'll do it.
But for those of you not familiar with what Big Brothers Big Sisters does, in addition to what Judge Vogt just read, we are a nonprofit mentoring organization. What we do is we find volunteers and we match them one-to-one in a compatible relationship with a child. And these kids from, come from all different backgrounds. They may be dealing with bullying in school, or struggling with self-esteem, or maybe they have a parent that's incarcerated, or maybe they have a parent that's in the military and is often deployed. So there's lots of reasons that children enroll in this program, but the tying factor amongst all of them is that they all want this program in their lives. They are all thrilled to be a part of it, and it means so much to them to have someone step up and say, hey, I care about you. I care about what goes on in your life, and I know you're capable of great things. It really is an amazing, amazing program that keeps kids in school, off drugs, away from gangs and violence, all of the above. And we are just so excited to always share our mission and the need for more mentors. We have over 100 children on our waiting list right now, and partnerships, as he mentioned, with the county are always wonderful to get more county employees involved. It's just a twice-a-month commitment. You get together with a child at least a couple times a month, whether it's Saturday evening, Tuesday afternoon. It's completely flexible to your schedule, and it's a wonderful, wonderful thing, and it's a lot of fun, too, I have to say. I want to share one quick, minute-long story about a big sister who was matched with a little brother, and for their very first outing, she was a little bit nervous, but she thought, okay, well, we'll go out, we'll grab a bite to eat, and then go to putt-putt golf. And so this child, she went and picked him up, and first things first, the child was beyond excited to sit in her car, rolled down his window, driving down the road like a little Shih Tzu puppy dog, just excited beyond belief. And the big sister thought, wow, he's a little energetic. It turned out that child had never driven on the freeway before. He lived in a very small home with his grandfather, who was a, you know, his mother had passed away, his father had died when he was young, and the grandfather really didn't have a need to leave their neighborhood, you know? The child's school was there, the grandfather's work was there, and he had a rickety old truck that he didn't trust at high rates of speed. So this was the first time this child had ever driven on the freeway. So that was an amazing first for him. Then they get to, I think they went to Taco Bell, and the child was completely overwhelmed by the amazing menu and all the choices. And so finally, he decided, I think he just got a taco meal, and thought it was the best thing he'd ever eaten. It was just delicious. He devoured it. And turned out that child had also never had any sort of fast food before. And of course, that's not a bad thing considering health, obesity rates. That's really something all of us should strive for. But it was something that really struck the big sister that, oh my gosh, this is something that I take for granted every day. It's on every street corner. It's the most convenient thing. You just go grab a quick bite. This child had never experienced it. So that's another second amazing first for this child. Then they get to putt-putt golf, and they decided to forego the golfing, and they went instead for the go-kart racing. And of course, he loved it. He was just tall enough to ride in his own go-kart, and he raced around that track with his big sister, and at the end of it, he raced up to her and said, oh my God, did you see that? I won the race. I beat him, I beat him, I lapped him twice. I beat everybody. And again, this big sister was so touched by the fact that, you know, there might not be a future in go-kart racing, but the fact that this child was so thrilled and excelled at this thing that he had never had the opportunity to experience was really, really impactful on her. And that's what our program is all about. It's about opening these children's eyes to a world that they never thought possible, or maybe just never had the opportunity to experience based on their lifestyle and their home situation. So that is a little bit of an extreme case. Most of our children have experienced most of those firsts, but there are some things that many of them haven't, and all they want is someone to spend some time with and hang out with and be part of their lives, and it means the world to these children. So I encourage anyone out there to volunteer, to be a big. It doesn't take much to make an amazing impact and give someone the best day of their life. Become someone's favorite person. So thank you so much for the opportunity. I definitely encourage you all to volunteer, or if you know children who are interested in rolling, we are also enrolling children as well. So thank you again for the opportunity to speak here. Sorry I went a little long.
No worries, and thank you again. And do you, you have some guests here? Would you like to come up and introduce themselves?
Sure, sure. I've got my colleagues here. I've got Annette Baumann, I've got Stephanie Gavin, Jesus Ramirez, and Vanessa Gutierrez. We are, I think, 90% of the very small Big Brothers Big Sisters team.
Well, congratulations to all the work that you do for the children in our community. They couldn't have a better advocate and a better partner in Big Brothers Big Sisters, and I'm hoping that you can pick up a few folks to serve as mentors from the audience today.
Absolutely.
So thank you again.
Thank you.
Round of applause. If you want to pick up the resolution. We, we have two signatures missing from the resolution. Commissioner Leon and Commissioner Perez are out, but if you'd like to pick that up from Commissioner Leon's office, within the next week, we should have it ready to go. Thank you again.
Thank you. Item 5, public comment.
Ms. Pitzek, I don't believe we have anybody signed up for public comment today, unless anybody in the audience would like to come before the Commissioners' Court. Okay. Very none, I think we can move on.
Thank you. No action on this item? Thank you. Item 6, presentation, 6A. Present certificate of appreciation to Ethics Commissioner Susan Barlow for her time in service on the El Paso County Ethics Commission from November 2, 2009, through January 31, 2018.
Good morning, Judge Commissioners. This is part of the new process where our office is placing these items on the agenda on behalf of Commissioners' Court. I just want to note that Commissioner Barlow was originally appointed in 2009 to the Ethics Commission. She had been nominated by the El Paso Society for Human Resources Management, and Commissioners' Court selected her then as a charter member. She actually also served a six-month term as Chair of the Commission back from September 1, 2015, to February 28, 2016. And we just wanted to introduce this item so the court can make its presentation to recognize Commissioner Barlow. So she'd like to come up.
Commissioner Barlow, before you say a few words, I was obviously not on the Commissioners' Court when your appointment was, was made, but I know that you've been a part of the board from its very beginning, and getting that piece of legislation passed was not easy, but it was historic for El Paso County. We were the first county in Texas to basically regulate ourselves and make sure that we had measures in place to ensure that the community had the kind of government that it deserved. And so you have been there from day one, you have seen it through, and again, it was not an easy journey, I'm sure, but the community and the county owes you a tremendous amount of gratitude for the time, the energy, and the effort that you put into not only taking the risk of serving your community, but ensuring that we had a government entity that everyone can be proud of. And while we were speaking just a little bit ago, you mentioned how it is such a pleasure for you to serve the community that you love. It's very difficult to find people who want to serve, who are enthusiastic to serve, and so to, I wish we had more Susan Barlos in the community to step up and say, this is my community, I'm going to take ownership of it and do what I can. But what you've done and what your colleagues have done on the Ethics Board is just amazing. We are so proud of the outcome from the work that you've put into this organization, into the county, and I asked you if you were willing to continue to serve in other roles, and you said yes, which makes me extremely happy, because we need more wonderful people like you to step up and, and be a leader. So thank you. I don't know if any other members of the court would like to say anything before Ms. Barlow.
Thank you very much. And also thank you so much for, for taking the time out of your day to make El Paso community better. Thank you.
Would you like to say a few words?
It was my honor to serve. As I was telling Judge Vogt just a few minutes ago, when we first began this challenge in 2009, which was mandated by the state of Texas, that our county needed a code of ethics. It was an enormous challenge, but we had some people on the commission who were dedicated to making El Paso shine as it should. I'm very proud of the work that we have accomplished. It's not a done deal. It is something that will need continuous work, continuous tweaking, as our community grows. need continuous work, continuous tweaking, as our community grows, as our responsibilities grow. But I could not be honest with you if I did not say that I am exceptionally proud of my county, El Paso County. We've worked hard. We will continue to work hard. We have a lot to share. It's important that the people of our community understand how proud they should be of their community, and yet, what needs to be done to make it better. I applaud all of you who participate in county government. And at the risk of sounding a little bit political, I'm delighted to see El Paso County still open.
And we will continue to be open.
Thank you very much. Thank you for the opportunity of being of service to my community. I am not a native-born El Pasoan, but I've been married for 53 years to a native-born El Pasoan.
Congratulations.
And this is his home. This is the first time I've ever lived anywhere this long. Of course, I'm not that old, only 39. But I appreciate the opportunity, and I would appreciate the opportunity to do more for my county should the need arise. Thank you.
Thank you. And would you like to introduce your husband and your...
I'd be delighted to.
Anyone else here?
My husband is John Barlow, 101% Texan. As a matter of fact, he was my mentor in human resources, and I owe any kind of success or knowledge that I have in that field based on his good guidance. And the gentleman who's sitting right next to him is our incredible son, who we won't tell anyone that someone's house is not getting repaired right now. But he was graceful, gracious enough to come be with us today, because this is important to all of us. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you again, and congratulations to you. The Commissioners' Court has a small token of our appreciation for all that you've done for our community and the county, and we'd like to present that to you, and we'll go ahead and come down.
Oh, my goodness.
Again, congratulations for all the work that you've done.
Thank you so very much. I have an incredible HR staff, by the way.
We're very lucky.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Round of applause, please.
Would you like to take a picture?
Oh, you bet. Photo op. Does anyone...
Good job, good job. Okay, one, two, three.
Judge, I just wanted to mention one more thing about Ms. Barlow's service. The first year, I tracked the hours the Ethics Commission had to put in in their first year of being appointed as volunteers, and it was the equivalent of pretty much a 10-hour-a-week job, because it was about 400, a little over 400 hours of work the first year that they put in. So really, a big thanks to Ms. Barlow.
That is incredible. Thank you again. Have a good afternoon.
Moving on to county administration, item seven. Discuss and take appropriate action regarding the Federal Aviation Administration Unmanned Aircraft Systems Integration Pilot Program, FAA UAS IPP with the University of Texas at El Paso.
Judge Commissioners, I previously mentioned that I did not think we would have an update on this item. However, I did receive an email this morning from the FAA that this project has been put on hold during the government shutdown, and so there may be a slight delay before we hear any results. That's the only update we have this morning.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you. So no action on this item. Moving on to judiciary and corrections, item eight. Approve and authorize the adjustment of the part-time regular 24 hours per week jury duty Associate Judge to full-time regular 30 hours per week. To convert this position from part-time regular to full-time regular will be converted with $21,459 of Council temp pool funds. Funding is available in account GF CNCL SALTEM Pool Judges. It's been requested by Mica Sguerto from the Council of Judges Administration to postpone this item for one week. Could we have a motion to do so?
Ms. Pitzek, we have the judge here to address that item.
No, we're not. We're not moving to postpone after all.
Okay, so we're going to handle the item. Thank you, Judge.
If we're not postponing the item, is there anyone here to speak on the item? Give some context. Excellent. Judge, could you just give us a brief overview of the change? And thank you for being here, Judge Housman.
No, there's been a little bit of confusion, but we hired the person. They're doing the part-time position, but we have always needed the full-time judge. We had a full-time judge, but because due to some screw-ups on the part of the council, we kind of said, well, let's just take whatever they'll give us, because we didn't make the formal request. And so we went in thinking it was a part-time job. We've provided the backup, which substantiates their request that there are funds to pay for the additional hours for the person who is in the job. It's not going to be a cost to the county, and we can definitely support the request. As I said, we've had it before, and we need it. We do have a backlog in the court. We intend to add an additional docket. We're still doing no-shows from 2014. We are up to date on the current ones. We're hearing October sessions. We're also giving the judge some additional duties. One of the things I intended to do, and just so that, to be clear, I expected that I would make this request next budget session. But we have all, we do have things that we need to get done. We have a hodgepodge of a procedures manual. So we think that it's supported. It's a decision, an administrative decision made by Judge Trejo and I to ask that it be increased to the full-time position, and I think the backup supports that there's not going to be a cost to the county.
Commissioners, any questions?
Judge, if I may?
Yes, sir.
In looking at the, in looking at the backup and the historical spending, the previous judge was working over 30 hours a week or 30 hours a week in this position as well?
You know, I don't have exact recall on Judge Higgs. He might have been doing the part-time. I'm not sure.
Yeah, that was, that was my only concern as I looked at historical. We've had, we've had one year where, the last two years, there's been, there's been funding remaining in that account. But if you go back and look, three years, four years, five and six, six years ago, it's been, it's been depleted in every instance. And that was my only concern is, based on the number of hours we want to switch this to from 24 to 30, is would that be a sustainable cost? If the additional impact is 21,000, last year, we left, there was 47,000 remaining in the budget. This year, there was, the year before, there was 59,000 remaining in the budget. Every year prior to that, we had tapped that budget out, and that was my only concern was just...
But you're talking about the visiting judges account, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, because it's not just used for this position. There are other positions.
Correct. And that, yeah. That was my other concern, is are we going to, are we going to be treading a fine line on having enough for other visiting judges?
We are going to have to make sure that we take care of the other needs that we have for visiting judges. My understanding from Judge Trejo is that the county court judges don't use that fund at all. But we've also used that fund, if I'm not mistaken. It could be, I don't know. You have to correct me. But my understanding is that it's also, we went back to make up the budget for shortfall for the J-Mags. Did we use that one? Because I think that might explain...
Haven't looked at the detail yet, but that's one of the things I thought it might have been as well.
Right.
And we had a repeating issue there on the J-Mag.
Right. We've had to, we've had to use it for a lot of things, but this is, so I can't say that the depletion of it was due to having a full-time judge in the position before. But, you know, we have looked at the funds. We believe we can do it, and that this is the right thing to do to support the judiciary, but also the functioning of the jury duty court and the staffing that it needs. We did cut back when Judge Higgs was here, and so we only had, I want to say that it was six full dockets. And so we're going to add another docket for that court. I can tell you that I did cover during the absence of having a judge there more than any other judge, and it's busy. There are some days when it's slow, but there are some days that it's busy. And Judge Trejo and I were managing some additional duties because we haven't had a full time. So in addition to, for example, Judge Trejo was dealing with medical exemptions. She was handling all of those when Judge Higgs was on the bench. And then I was, there's a lot of stuff going on with the jury duty court. There's another note that we do, a personal note to tell jurors, please avoid having a warrant issued for your arrest. I was doing that. Now we have someone who's going to take care of all those duties, which, you know, were really difficult for us to kind of handle during the absence of having a full judge. So it's a need that we have, and we believe that we provided the backup that we can pay for it, and we're going to figure it out if, in fact, there's a need there. I mean, we're using funds that we believe we have to cover it.
I have a question.
Commissioner Hagerty?
I don't have an issue with it, with what Paulie says. I guess my only issue is what happens if we use these funds, and then it gets closer to the end of the year, we run out of funds, and they need them for something else?
Well, I mean, we don't have them. And I can tell you that there's communication with the judges about the use of those funds, the balance of the funds, when they can be used, how they can be used, and we have policies to address that. But I don't recall that ever happening. I might like to think that I stay on top of those things, but I've never had that kind of notification that we are out of funds, and therefore, we can't use the visiting judge fund. There are other funds that we do get close on, the temporary bailiff pool and those kinds of things that we do get notifications on, and we just adjust. But on this one, I don't believe I've ever gotten a notification that we don't have visiting judge funds to use.
Mr. Hardgrove, does that answer your question? That would be my concern as well, is that we ensure that that funding is there.
In July, we don't get a request for more funds because we ran out of funds.
Well, we're here making the request, understanding that you're letting us know, and I understand that, but I don't, I don't think so. Mike, do you have more information about the visiting judge fund and...
No, we haven't historically used it in its entirety. We've actually shifted it over. Mikey Sguerto, the Executive Director of the Council of Judges.
Good morning.
Good morning. There appears to be sufficient funds to transfer. We're looking at $21,000 to move over. However, we're going to generate $44,000 in revenue. It's going to go to the general fund. So we're making, by adding one more session, it increases the dollar amount by 17%. And I didn't go by assessed. I went on collected, actual collected revenue for the year 2016. And that was when there were only six sessions being used.
But, Mike, the question is about depleting the visiting judge fund in the past.
Well, we won't. Well, in the past, that visiting judge fund is strictly for the county courts at law, for them to use visiting judges. When a district court needs a visiting judge, Judge Abels funds it out of his budget, the state budget. So this only affects the county courts at law. And they have not traditionally called that many visiting judges in. So we've always had a little bit left over. My estimation is that we can make it through without asking for any money with only going to a 30-hour.
The conversation that we'll have to have, I guess, during budget is, I mean, because it's going to, I mean, the request is going to be that this is funded out of the, through the regular budget and not in the future through the temp pool, right?
Right. And we, and as I said, in full disclosure, I intended to do that next time, to make sure that we get it all done right and before the court on time for budget, and to show you what we've been able to do with a full-time judge. It was, I was going to ask a lot of her to do it on a part-time basis, but I was going to ask her to do some of the additional things that we have not been able to do. You know, there's a list of things that we need to do with jury duty service, and hoping that we'll be able to show you not only that there is not a cost concern, but that we can utilize the full-time judge in that position.
Move to approve with the understanding that we're not going to come back later with we need more funding in this pool because we ran out.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Hagerty?
Aye.
Judge vote?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Judge. Have a good afternoon. Thank you, Mike.
Litigation, Justice, and Law Enforcement, item nine, postponed December 18, 2017, and January 8, 2018. Approve and authorize the county judge to sign the Asset Disposition Services Agreement with Property Room Comm. Incorporated to provide asset disposition services for the El Paso County Sheriff's Office, contract number 20170900.
Do we have anybody here from the sheriff's office to speak on this item? I know we've postponed it a few times.
Judge, if you all will lay this on the table, I'll get some information on this item.
Thank you. Ms. Pitzek, if we could please move on to item 10.
Certainly. Thank you. Item 10. Approve and authorize the county judge to sign the agreement for the COPS Training Project Micro Grant with the Center Against Sexual and Family Violence Incorporated for the period of September 1, 2017, to August 31, 2018. Funding is available under CGOPS CPD 18, contract number 20170776.
Good morning.
Good morning, Judge. Good morning, Commissioners. Isabel Edinundis from Budget and Fiscal Policy and the Grants Administration Division. Today, we're here to finalize our memorandum of agreement, or MOU, with the Center Against Sexual and Family Violence to proceed with the grant that we received in November. And I have Stephanie Carr here to add on to what we're going to be doing with our project.
Good morning, Ms. Carr.
Good morning, Judge. Good morning, Commissioners. Well, first of all, I'd like to thank Isabel for her initiative in applying for this training grant. This is a big boost, I believe, to county employees as well as to the center. The purpose of this grant is to provide training to not only law enforcement officers in the county, but to county personnel as well about the issues related to domestic violence spilling over into the workplace. Approximately 20 to 40% of threats that go to county security offices across the country are related to workplace domestic violence that spills over. And so this is a relevant issue and happens every day, whether we're aware of it or not. So this grant provides us an opportunity to work both with supervisors, county personnel, and law enforcement officers around issues related both to domestic violence and sexual assault. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions? I would move to approve.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Hagerty? Judge vote?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Have a good afternoon.
Health and Social Services, item number 11. Approve and authorize the county judge to sign a master services software licensing agreement, Exhibit A services level agreement, Schedule A order form, and statement of work with CaseWorthy Incorporated for an enterprise case management software for the Community Services Department. The enterprise case management software system is HIPAA compliant with a total fiscal impact of $86,724. This vendor was selected under bid number 17006 for a three-year term. Funds available in CIP 17 Nutra Admin Software, contract number 20170667.
Good morning.
Good morning, Judge. Commissioners, Carlos Marquez, Office Manager with the Community Services Department. My Executive Director was not able to make it this morning. She has jury duty. So this is a software that we're going to be purchasing for the, for the whole department. It's a three-year term. It went, it was approved through the CIP 2017 process, and it did go out to bid and was vetted through the ITD Department.
Commissioners?
Approve.
Second.
And that was Commissioner Stout?
Yes, ma'am.
And the judge. Thank you. Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Hagerty?
Aye.
Judge vote?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good afternoon.
Item 12, approve and authorize the county judge to sign the Texas Department of Agriculture Grant Agreement and Attachments that acknowledge the county's acceptance of an award of $110,048.1 for home-delivered meals for elderly individuals and persons with a disability for a term beginning February 1st, 2018, and ending January 31st, 2019. Revenue account SG Nutrum M18ST Rev Agency, contract number 2018-0009.
Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. Rosalva Hernandez with the Nutrition Division Program. This is a renewal grant through Texas Department of Agriculture. It begins February 1st, ends January 31st of 2019, and it is for the Home Delivered Meals Program.
And from what I understand, there is no backlog in our home-delivered meals. It is a congregate meals that we've had the issue. Okay, perfect.
That is correct. Yes.
Approve.
Second.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Hagerty?
Aye.
Judge vote?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Excellent. Thank you. Have a good afternoon.
Human Resources, item 13. Approve and authorize the county judge to sign the Master Service Agreement Renewal 2017-0851 between the County of El Paso and Aetna Life Insurance Company for third-party administration services for the county's health and dental plan and related services for plan year 2018. Funding is available in IS Health, Health Dental Claims.
Good morning.
Good morning, Judge. Commissioners Verenice Costa with the Human Resources Department. In 2013, the County of El Paso awarded a request for proposal number 13-031 to Aetna Life Insurance Company to serve as the county's third-party administrator for the county's health and dental plan and related benefits. Based on the RFP, the county, with the assistance of our health consultants and Aetna Life Insurance Company, developed a master service agreement which sets forth the terms and conditions under which Aetna agrees to render the services and under which the county agrees to receive and compensate Aetna Life Insurance Company for such services. The services include TPA claims administration for medical and dental plans, manage medical and dental provider network, pharmacy benefit management programs, stop-loss reinsurance, COBRA/HIPAA administration, disease management programs, wellness programs and initiatives, employee assistant programs, retiree medical insurance, third-party administrator eligibility service, and IRS Section 125 pre-tax plan administration. The term of the contract is for a three-year period with a renewal option of two additional one-year periods. This agreement represents the second of two one-year renewal options with a term beginning on January 1st, 2018, and ending on December 31st, 2018. The renewal maintains the existing terms, which will result in a 3% medical fee increase to the county. Dental fees remain unchanged, as do the employee assistant program fees and earn-back guaranteed levels. Pharmacy discounts are expected to result in additional savings to the county for plan year 2018, and an additional $10,000 is included for wellness programs. The staff is recommending for the Commissioners' Court to approve the Aetna Master Service Agreement Renewal for plan year 2018.
Questions, Commissioners? Commissioner Hagerty?
Who to approve?
Second.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Hagerty?
Aye.
Judge vote?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Have a good afternoon.
Public Works, item 14. Approve and authorize the county judge to accept the community contribution of four little free libraries to be installed around Escarate Park. Further, approve and authorize the waiving of parking fees to all volunteers entering Escarate Park to work on this project.
Good morning, Judge. Commissioners Norma Palacios, Public Works Department. Joining me this morning is Alexandra South. She's our marketing specialist for the parks and special events. We're excited to be bringing forward this item as we feel that it would really benefit the community that we serve. So at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Alexandra South. Mrs. South has been the lead on this project, and she can give you additional details on this.
Excellent. Good morning, Ms. South.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. I'm Alexandra South, marketing specialist with Parks and Special Events. We are partnering with JPD, the Juvenile Probation Department, on an initiative that they're actually kind of heading up is Global Youth Service Day, which will happen on April 21st, 2018. And Global Youth Service Day incorporates local youth into volunteer projects. And so the proposed project this year is to install free little libraries at Escarate Park. So the materials will be notated, and the children will work under the guidance of professionals to build these little libraries. And we'll install them around the park and then maintain them through stewardship programs. Oh, okay. This is an example of a free little library. So they're nationwide, if not internationally. They'll promote park stewardship and encourage literacy in a new space. These are the four proposed library locations. So they're all accessible, but they'll also encourage people to walk the length of the lake. So we're incorporating a recreational aspect as well as the literacy part. The United Way Local Chapter is committed to doing the initial stocking of these four This project is scalable, so we'll be able to kind of try it out at Escarate and then eventually add them to all of the county parks. This is kind of a little mock-up version of what it could look like. So I'm happy to answer any questions. We're really excited about it.
I have a question.
Sure.
I love the idea. I know we did something similar to this on the east side with Commissioner Perez a couple years ago, didn't we?
Sorry, I was... What we did on the east side a few years ago was we accepted, we did a book drive here at the county, and it was to stock the library that's in our Aguadulce Community Center for the, and we really needed children's books, but we received both children's and adults' books, and used it to stock the bookshelves there at the Aguadulce Community Center.
But I remember a part of it was a little, the little free library thing as well, and I'm just curious if that showed any success or anything. Because I remember, we've had conversations about these in the past a couple of years ago, and I like the idea of it. I just want to see, is it an empty box and no one's had, brought a book back in four years, or is it something that's actually seeing success?
I am not aware of us doing the little libraries. I'm only aware of the one that was in our Aguadulce Community Center.
I remember that being done, but I don't know if it was, or being talked about. I don't remember it was actually finalized. I have no problem with it. It's just the hard part is making sure it stays stocked and not turned into a birdhouse.
I think the partnership piece, which Alexandra spoke to, is really critical to the ongoing success of these libraries.
Right. That's what the United Way, they're the ones that have committed to stock.
They've committed to the initial stocking, and then ongoing stocking will be done through soliciting donations and then proposing book drives at various county facilities so that people can donate materials. Sometimes the libraries may be emptied out, which is fantastic. That means people have books at home. And so we are working on partnering with organizations in different areas of the community, Girl Scout troops, Boy Scout troops, that type of thing, to adopt the libraries, which will help keep them stocked and also prevent vandalism and do some maintenance on them as they need it.
If you haven't reached out to Books or Gems, I would suggest...
Yeah, that name came up. So we're definitely, we're definitely seeking them out.
And I agree with Commissioner Hagerty. I think that we had looked at this model in the past. I'm not sure that we ever implemented it, but it would be ideal, if this partnership does flourish, for us to consider looking at Gagel's Park as it begins to undergo its really great transformation in the future, and looking at some of our parks on the far east side and any other county parks where we have high volume of traffic that might benefit the community with something like this.
Absolutely. We want to reach all parts of the county with it after we kind of roll out this initial program.
Excellent.
I think this is great. Move to approve. Thank you.
Second.
Aye.
Commissioner Hagerty?
Aye.
Judge vote?
Aye.
Motion carries.
And of all the great work that Public Works is doing, they're still worrying about our little libraries, which is fantastic. So thank you for not forgetting about literacy in our community. Appreciate it.
Thank you so much, Judge.
Grant applications. Approve the submission of county grant applications as listed and described. If awarded, all grant award agreements will be brought back to the Commissioners' Court for final acceptance and approval. Item 15, approve and authorize the 65th District Court to apply for fiscal year 2018-2019 Specialty Courts Grant through the Office of the Governor, Criminal Justice Division, CJD, requesting $89,131 to be utilized for the Family Drug Court. In addition, request the county judge sign the required resolution. The grant is for a period of 12 months. No match is required.
Good morning.
Good morning. I'm Ruth Fierro with the 65th District Court. I'm the coordinator for the Family Drug Court. And our focus is working with families who have been referred to the Child Protective Services and have a substance abuse issue. And our goal is to give the parent substance abuse treatment. We have family strengthening programs. We have cognitive behavioral programs. Along with this grant, we purchase drug kits to, for random urinalysis. And so that's basically what the entire grant will purchase.
I move to approve.
Second.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Hagerty?
Aye.
Judge vote?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Have a good afternoon.
Item 16, approve and authorize the County of El Paso through its Community Services Department to apply for a reentry program grant under the Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration, SAMSHA, Center for Substance Abuse Treatment, to provide services to people who are returning to their families and communities from incarceration. Further, authorize the county judge to sign all pertinent grant documents.
Good morning.
Good morning. Letis Edmondari with Budget and Fiscal Policy Grant Division. And Irene has jury duty this morning, so I'm here to take up her item. She is applying for a SAMSHA grant to fund her program that is being created in her department. It's a reentry program. It is a five-year grant for a total of $425,000 per year. She's requesting funds to hire two case managers and a data collection specialist. In addition, she is going to bid out services for treatment of the participants of her program once it's created.
Any other comments from Ms. Keller or Mr. Bishop? I know you're in the audience.
This is part of the county strategic plan for reentry. Applying for the grant is one of the steps in that action, so we would ask for the court's support.
I move to approve.
Second.
That was Commissioner Stout and the judge. Thank you. Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Hagerty?
Aye.
Judge vote?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 17, approve and authorize the District Attorney's Office to submit the grant application to the Office of the Governor, Criminal Justice Division, for the El Paso County's Domestic Violence Unit, VAWA, grant for fiscal year 2019 in the amount of $195,639 with a county catch match of $129,610 for a project total of $325,249 for the period of September 1st, 2018, to August 31st, 2019.
Good morning, Mr. Sparza.
I'm Jaime Sparza, District Attorney. This is a grant we have had for some time. We have a really good relationship with the governor's office, but last year they said, we may not fund you this coming year. You're going to have to be a little more innovative, a little more creative. So what we've chosen to do is, we've been working really hard on domestic violence for the last 10 years, and we have a backlog in the courts. And so we're pitching to the governor's office that they allow us to have a team so that we could attack the backlog. And so it would be a prosecutor, investigator, and a paralegal. The amount that the county would pay is exactly what you pay currently. The paralegal, if they give it to us, would be fully funded by them.
You'd be addressing the backlog in, sorry, what court?
In all the courts.
All of them?
All the courts. We have, it's not unusual for us to, in 2018, to be trying a 2015, 2014 case or even later. So in these cases, delay is really crippling. So we're hoping to be able to, not just what we do in court, but address these older cases so that we can get some sort of justice and move these cases along.
And you said it would, the positions it will pay for were...
What they currently pay for on the prosecutor and on the investigator and the paralegal would not be matched by the county.
Now, this isn't adding any additional...
It is not. But I would tell you, just in fairness, that we were asked to have a budget match of 29%. The budget match is currently, as way it's written, at 40%. But it is no new money from the part of the county. The budget match actually would be greater than that had we not pitched to the governor's office the paralegal.
So they're picking up the paralegal and we're not having to pay for the paralegal?
Well, we're hoping. We're hoping. That is the plan.
Right.
Judge, if I may? Wally from Budget and Fiscal. So as I understand it, your application is applying for, you're matching more than the state's requiring, but also we're asking for $195,000 from the state for this program? And I can tell you now, I'm 99% sure we're not going to get the full amount because we just attended a meeting last week at COG, and the COG's only putting, the state pass-through funding this year is just going to be a little over $160,000. So that's my only comment and concern on that one.
Okay, this is the preliminary stages. We can fight this battle down the road, but just to be fair, this is the same issue we faced last year. And I've had extensive conversations with them about this. And so they funded the protective order, and they also funded this project as well. We went way beyond what the COG had available to them.
Yeah, last year they doubled what they said they could offer.
Right. And I can just tell you that our conversations with the governor's office, they really like what we do. Our model has been followed throughout the state. Both I and another prosecutor, Ms. Baca, traveled the state on a variety of things that we do on domestic violence, not just our 24-hour. We do the camera project. And so they are, I think I can comfortably say, impressed with what we've done here. The issue really for us is, and it was the issue we had last year, is that they said, look, you know, we funded you for a little while here, and we want to invest in new and innovative projects. And so we said, fine, I hear you loud and clear. They funded us last year. I don't, if we ran with the same grant, I am pretty sure they would not, they will not fund us again this year. So we've been in contact with the Texas Council on Family Violence and others on creative ways to improve the work that we do. And for us, the biggest issue for us besides what we do in court is the backlog. So we're hoping to convince the governor's office that this is an innovative way of attacking the backlog. We're not the only ones in the state that have a backlog. Only 5% of cases get tried nationally, and so we have to deal with that 95%. And so we're trying to figure out a way to drill, to deal with these issues. These are really complex cases, and we're committed to the struggle, but that's sort of where we are.
I'm sorry, can you explain again the difference in the percentage and the rate that we would be putting in as a cash match?
Sure. Right now, you put in $129,000. We're asking them to put in $195,000. You currently pay 50% of the prosecutor and 50% of the investigator. The additional amount is the paralegal, which basically increases the total, right? If we just asked for a prosecutor and an investigator, the match would be greater than 40%.
I move to approve. I'll second.
Aye.
Commissioner Hagerty?
Aye.
Judge vote? Aye. Motion carries. Item number 18, approve and authorize the District Attorney's Office to submit the grant application to the Office of the Governor, Criminal Justice Division, for El Paso County's Victim Assistance Program for fiscal year 2019 and fiscal year 2020. Victim Assistance Program for fiscal year 2019 and fiscal year 2020 in the amount of $896,772, with a county match of $243,903, for a project total of $896,772, for the period of September 1st, 2018, to August 31st, 2020.
This grant is almost identical to last year, except we've added and we've requested that they give us an additional victim advocate, which would be funded entirely by the grant. The difference here is we're hoping to create greater outreach on our domestic violence cases. We have, we've been working now for some time on this, what we call "cut it out," and we're going to the hairdressers, the salons, so that we can talk to them about domestic violence. Many women go there. Many women go there and talk about all sorts of things. We want them, when they happen to talk about domestic violence, we want the hairdresser to know, those people at the salon to know what they should be looking for and what we believe should be an appropriate response. What are the resources in the community? More importantly, to give them confidence to speak out. So it's one more way for us to reach out. That's why we've asked for an additional advocate. This also is more than the 20% that's required. It's at 27%. This is still the preliminary stages, but I can tell you that VAWA across the state is flush. So we're just trying to take advantage of that opportunity now. There are, they actually, I don't think, spend statewide the entire amount of their VAWA money.
VAWA or VOKA?
I mean, VOKA.
VOKA.
I'm sorry, VOKA.
Move to approve.
Second.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Hagerty?
Aye.
Judge Vogt?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number 19, approve and authorize the request to submit the grant application to the Office of the Texas Governor's Homeland for the Border Prosecution Unit for fiscal year 2019 in the amount of $1,090,000 for the grant period of September 1st, 2018, through August 31st, 2019, with no county match required.
I am the project director for this Border Prosecution Unit statewide. That's why the grant is so high. It not only funds the four prosecutors that you currently have here, it also funds other prosecutors, and more importantly, the educational outreach that we have to all law enforcement agencies along the border. We are probably, I can't say definitively, but we are certainly one of the most, well, a better way to say it is, we are a group that reaches out to law enforcement for education and free education than probably most others. We go into very small communities along the border, and we offer them CLEs so that we want to make sure they understand the law, they understand what's required of them. One, it helps us, our cases are better, and I think it helps the community. This is an excellent project, besides the fact of the work that we do strictly on border prosecution cases. The work we do here in El Paso is mostly done by very experienced prosecutors working on rather in-depth cases, mostly dealing with border prosecution cases, border cases, but also the drug cartel, transnational gangs, and things of that nature. I'm really proud of this project. It doesn't require a match from the county. I will actually be talking to you individually about an issue in the Border Prosecution Unit because there's something I'd like to do within that grant, but I'll have to put that on the agenda for a later day.
Approve.
Second.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Hagerty?
Aye.
Judge Vogt?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Espaza. Have a good afternoon.
If I could just say, I'm a regular golfer at Ascate. This is off the agenda, but just quickly, I think you're doing great. And I run around the lake pretty often, almost daily, and it looks great. So keep up the work. I love that path. It's just that that dirt path is great for my knees.
And our team has been doing some improvements on the path, like rolling it and things like that. So thank you for noticing.
Excellent, thank you. And we'll have little libraries there now, too.
Maybe you can get us some law books to put in there or something.
Budget and Finance, item 20, receive a report on the results from the Series 2017 General Obligation Bond Sale from the county's financial advisor and senior underwriting firm.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. Wally Hargrove from the Office of Budget and Fiscal Policy. As you're aware, we conducted, at least for the immediate future, what will be our last advanced refunding. And we had a very good sale in December. Team did a great job, and we have staff here from the firms of G.K. Baum and Ramirez and Company, our underwriting firm, to give you an overview of that bond sale, the final pricing and the savings that the county effectuated.
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners. Thanks for having me. For the record, Brad Engst, George K. Baum and Company, act as financial advisors to the county. Working with the Budget and Finance staff and your auditors, we've been evaluating some advanced refunding opportunities dating back to September, when we came to the court with a parameters order to open up a window, if you will, for us to act on providing savings through the refinancing of some bonds. At that time, you put some parameters that it had to be at least 3% savings, and at that point, we went forward, continuing to evaluate and get to that right time. The longer you typically wait till you get to a prepayment option or the call option, you can typically increase your savings by reducing some of the negative arbitrage. So we had been evaluating that, looking for the right time to move forward, when the tax legislation started to come around. The tax legislation took away some mechanics and some options, financing options for the county and other municipalities, a couple different ways, but one of them was the ability to do advanced refundings. And that means you can refinance or refund your bonds more than 90 days ahead of that call option. So we wanted to take advantage of this mechanism before it went away. However, it was the judge, it was the court's wishes and staff's wishes to go forward with an underwriting RFP, to establish a pool of underwriters that the county could work with going forward for the next five years. Working with staff in your purchasing office, they expedited an RFP process and chose a group of underwriters to work with. From that process, determined a senior manager, as well as two co-managers, to work with on this transaction. Ms. Palacios with Ramirez will be presenting the details of the results of the sale here in just a moment, but I did want to take you through a little bit of the timeline and how we got there. Ultimately, we were able to save the county approximately 10%, 10.4% compared to the debt you had on the books and outstanding. That equates to about $5.6 million in net present value savings to your taxpayers. Based on the days leading up to that, you got quite a bit of a bump. There was a rush to market in December with a lot of the different issuers around the country, within Texas, trying to get their last advanced refunding in there and on the books to garner these savings. And before the 1st of January came around, it was no longer an option. So there's a flood of bonds out there. But at the end of the day, the investors and buyers really did like El Paso County, and they rewarded you all with these great savings. Let me introduce Ms. Palacios to take you through the details of the transaction. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to come and speak today about the successful transaction, Series 2017. Once again, I was honored to represent my firm in being selected as the senior underwriter from the RFP process. We've been a partner with you all for many years now and have achieved, again, another successful market pricing. And I'm going to be piggybacking a little bit on what Brad said. December was a very unusual month to be entering the market. We all heard that, you know, this was, the tax reform was lingering, there were a lot of details that were going to affect the municipal bond market. And so the main effect that we needed to rush into the market was going to be the elimination of advanced refundings. So we were notified as senior manager approximately two weeks before the transaction was going to enter the market. So I want to commend the staff, the FA, the bond council. We had to move very, very fast to get this to market. We had to do a due diligence call, we had to post the initial offering, we had to do all the pre-marketing with investors. And this was in tandem with a very volatile market and also a record volume month. For instance, to give you a little perspective, in, once the tax reform was released, or the bills were released, the market volume in December ended at $62 billion. This was a record ever since, ever reached before. In December of '85, when the prior tax reform, the most significant prior tax reform occurred, the volume was $54 billion. So this was a rush to market like we had never seen before. So I commend the fast-moving pace the staff had to work. And also, Judge Vogt got to witness this pricing for the first time through some of our electronic order process. And I think that was a really valuable tool that we were able to share transparency with the client and also what was going on with the market and communication with the co-managers. So as I said, you know, rates were really volatile. We were going back and forth, the FA team and ourselves, and providing the county with reads, what I call "market reads," the week before pricing to say, "Okay, here's where we think your savings are. Here's where the market is today." And quite honestly, they were going up, up, and up, meaning you were losing potential savings up until the week of pricing. However, when we actually entered the market, it kind of started to stabilize that week, and we actually got some tailwind, which really helped lower interest rates as we came into the market. We had a pricing call with the syndicate, which was Citigroup and Seabird, and with that team, we provided a pre-marketing scale that was going to be aggressive at the time to make sure that we got the best savings for the county in coordination with George K. Baum and their underwriter. We entered the market, and what we received was significant interest in your bonds, in particular, in the short end of the structure in 2022 and 2023, where those were some of the money market funds really flooding into the market and wanting to get your credit. It was, it's not often in the market, and it's also really highly rated. So we were excited to see that. Overall, we received $222 million in total orders, roughly 4.4 times total of bonds, of the total $50 million of the bonds outstanding. This comprised of 17 different investors. And one thing I really like to note is, with the history we have with the county, we were able to bring in nine new investors that have not purchased your credit before. So that is a huge sign to say we got, and went and marketed to existing investors, and not only that, we brought in new investors, and a lot of those were investment advisors and money managers. So now you have more diversification in who holds the county's bonds. And also, we also received support from the syndicate members. We received member orders from both Citigroup and Seabird to support the transaction. At the end of the day, in looking at the total book of orders, we were able to further provide additional savings for the county by lowering yields or spreads to the 2018 maturity by two basis points. In the 2022 and '23, where I said we had really robust interest, we lowered those by six basis points. And on the tail end, between 2027 and '32, we also were able to lower rates by four basis points. Overall, Brad had mentioned, total savings was approximately $4.6 million, or 10.4% of bonds refunded, and that's on a net present value basis. And a little bit of where were we then and where are we now for color. As you know, the tax reform, the Tax Cuts Bill and Job Act was actually implemented as of January 1st of this year. What has happened since then is rates have risen. So for example, when we entered the market in December 5th, the 10-year MMD, which is the Municipal Market Indicator, was 2%. Today, it's 2.13%. But even more so, the 10-year Treasury, at the time of pricing, was a 236, and today it's a 265. So you hit the nail on the head. You went and, you not only entered the market when it was a flood of issuance and really found your footing, but also reacted timely because this opportunity would no longer, is no longer available to the county with the new tax reform. And lastly, I'd like to say, I'm excited again to have been able to represent my firm, Ramirez, and also to let you know, I'm a fellow El Paso, and I was born and raised here. I do live in Austin now, but when I go and talk to my desk and say, "You need to get another investor, you need to fight for another basis point of savings because that's $100,000, that's $300,000." That goes to my family and my friends here who live in El Paso. So thank you for that opportunity. And I'll turn back to Brad.
With that, do you all have any questions?
No immediate questions. I do want to congratulate... Auditor's Office, Wally, our chief administrator's office, all of you who work on behalf of the court, this really was the county attorney's office, a fast and furious process. We were incredibly lucky that, it just seems, as you mentioned, we hit the nail right on the head with timing, and the opportunity was ripe. And I think we exceeded expectations in terms of the savings. We weren't anticipating a $4.6 million savings, but that is wonderful. So thank you to everyone who took the time to work, long hours, early mornings, and thank you for being so inclusive in the process. I did get to watch and learn, and it was really exciting to see so many people have an interest in El Paso County and their support.
Thank you, Judge.
Thank you very, very much. I appreciate it. And we hope to see you in El Paso more often, maybe even move back to El Paso at some point.
I stayed at Grandma's house last night. It was great.
Thank you. Have a good afternoon.
Item 21, approve amendment number 15 to the County of El Paso's 2017-2018 operating budget. This budgetary amendment will increase grants by $12,993.79, thus increasing the overall
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. Wally Hargrove from the Office of Budget and Fiscal Policy. Within capital projects, we have one amendment transferring $5,101 out of our CIP tax enforcement vehicles into CIP Capital Improvement Miscellaneous. This is to cover the cost of equipping the new vehicle and close that account out. Within general fund, transferring overtime and related fringe benefits in an amount of $4,257 from the sheriff's patrol unit over to sheriff's animal control to cover overtime costs to be incurred through the end of the fiscal year. Within economic development, transferring $3,500 out of contract service into maintenance software to cover the cost of the purchase of business retention expansion software. Last amendment within general fund, transferring $6112 out of parking garage equipment into parking garage operations to cover the cost of the purchase of fire extinguishers throughout the parking facility. We have one amendment within grants. It's a program income for Rural Transit Assistance 2016 in the amount of $12,993.79, setting up the appropriation under contract services to cover the cost of services in this grant, when asked for your favorable consideration.
I just have a question. How come we didn't have budgeted that we had to have fire extinguishers in the parking lot?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
How come we didn't have budgeted that we had to have fire extinguishers in the parking lot and we had to transfer them?
This is a new installation of fire extinguishers throughout the facility. They did not have them in the past.
Were they supposed to be there?
I could not ask.
Our facilities inquired with the Fire Marshal's Office, and this was their recommendation that they be placed throughout the garage.
Move to approve.
Thank you. Second.
Aye.
Judge Vogt?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item 22, discuss and take appropriate action to allocate additional capital funding for the courthouse and parking garage elevator modernization project.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. Wally Hargrove from the Office of Budget and Fiscal Policy. I'm asking, Facilities has completed the estimates and gotten bids in for the elevator re-modernization. Original amount allocated to this project was just over $637,000 to complete the elevator modernization in the county garage, being garage number one, the original garage back from 1991, and the existing six passenger elevators that are in the center of this courthouse. The bid came in at $1.78 million. To facilitate that, we would have to do an allocation from existing capital projects, which all are from the CP Capital 12 budget. That would come out of courthouse improvement renovations for excess funds, IT equipment, courthouse improvement miscellaneous, and our sweep account in our Capital Project 12 account, where we had closed out prior projects that were funded out of CIP penny. In addition to that, we would need about an additional $205,000 out of our parking garage enhancement account. We set that money up in the parking garage, dedicated 10% of the proceeds earned in revenue from the parking garage for the last two years, and we would need that $200,000, bringing the project funding total to $1.787. the project funding total to $1.787 million.
The parking garage that we're talking about, is that the employee or the?
No, the daily garage.
Okay, perfect. I know that both elevators were out last week. Have we repaired the?
They were up and running Friday by about, in the afternoon Friday. Yes, sir, they were repaired on Friday.
Thank you.
Those, those elevators, along with the six passenger elevators in this facility, have not gone through a modernization, which would replace the panels, the cabling, that would not make, would not make them any quicker. The speed of the elevators is timed the way it is, but it will make them more reliable and less susceptible to breakdown in the future. They are 20-plus years old.
And I know that the public has shared their concern with the elevators. In terms of timing, this would take all of 2018 and 2019 for the project to be complete, I assume, correct?
Yes, because the amount of time to recable and redo those, they, they do them in a, in a single elevator, a single elevator in the parking garage, and I think they do a pairing here in the county garage.
We can get you the exact timeline from the proposal.
It's an extensive project, but I'll, we'll have to get you the timeline.
And if at all possible, it would be ideal perhaps to start work, I mean, obviously simultaneously, but if there was a prioritization, the, the parking garage elevators might be first only, in that we have so many people using those, and we've got two there and six in the courthouse, so. Would move to approve?
Second.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Hagerty?
Aye.
Judge Vogt?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. The budget amendment that will effectuate this change and the reallocation will be on next week's agenda.
Thank you.
And we have item nine still remaining.
I'm ready.
Thank you, item nine. Already been read into the record?
Judge, I've heard from both the sheriff's office and Purchasing. Purchasing had had some concerns. She has notified me that all of her concerns have been addressed in the addendum that is included in the backup, so we had asked that the court consider approval of this item.
I think this is a good item. I remember when they had the presentation on this, I moved to approve.
And the only issue we were waiting on clarification was to ensure that it wasn't all county items that were being optioned off.
Correct. We wanted it to be clear that it was our surplus forfeiture, our forfeiture items.
Move to approve?
Already did.
Second.
Oh, Commissioner Hagerty made the motion, and the judge seconded. Thank you. Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Hagerty?
Aye.
Judge Vogt?
Aye.
Motion carries. Executive session. Commissioners Court, Ms. Sanchez, did you want to request a motion?
I have, for item number 23F. I have to have the court make a specific finding. We're asking that we go into negotiations. Did you already read that item?
No, I haven't read that. Would you like me to read the item?
Yeah, yes, please, before we recess.
Pursuant, item 23F, pursuant to Texas Government Code, Section 551.0725, discuss negotiations regarding request for proposals, number 17038, the county's 457 deferred compensation plan.
In order to go into executive session for this particular item, the court needs to make specific findings, because we are going to be discussing certain negotiation points as it relates to this particular RFP. A memorandum has already been provided to the backup and has also provided to Ms. Pitek, but I need the court to make a finding that having an open meeting deliberation on this item would have a detrimental effect on the position of the Commissioners Court of the negotiations, and that all said deliberations take place in closed sessions. I would further ask that the Commissioners Court direct the county clerk to ensure that all proceedings on this matter in closed sessions be recorded. And I do need a unanimous finding from the court on that item.
Move to approve.
We do. Okay.
We need to.
We need a motion or just to go ahead and agree?
We, I need a, that finding on the record, and then we need a motion, please.
Move to, move to approve or agree or whatever.
Second.
Thank you. Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Hagerty?
Aye.
Judge Vogt?
Aye.
Motion carries. Now, Commissioners Court will recess into executive session to discuss items, items 23A through 23H, pursuant to Texas Government Code, Section 551.0725, 51.551.087, 551.072, and 551.071. The court will reconvene to take official action, and we are recessing at 10:56 a.m.
Commissioner Andrew Hagerty would like to invite you to his weekly breakfast meeting that takes place every Wednesday at 7:30 a.m. at Danny's Diner located at 4690 Trent's Mountain Road. Every week he has a different speaker who will be discussing topics of interest for the community. So if you live in the northeast, west side, or anywhere else in the county, come and join us for the breakfast meeting.
Don't wait in line, pay online. Visit the Financial Recovery Division website at http://www.epcounty.com/budget/financialrecovery.htm to make your payments online or find out more about our kiosk locations. We now accept payments on misdemeanor felony and justice of the peace cases.
You can now watch Commissioners Court meetings on YouTube. Go to youtube.com and search for El Paso County Commissioners or El Paso County, Texas. Subscribe to our channels to see our latest videos.
Did you know that you can save money on the cost of your medications? And doing so is easy. In 2015, the County of El Paso launched a prescription discount card program from coast to coast. The cards are available to all El Paso County residents free of charge and everyone qualifies. You can pick up a card at any county office location, Walgreens, Walmart, CVS, or Target pharmacies, or simply print the card at www.coast, the number two, coast, r x dot com. Happy savings.
Did you know the County of El Paso's purchasing department is responsible for ensuring that all items and services needed by various county departments are purchased in the manner required by the state of Texas? Whether through formal sealed bids or smaller dollar quotations, the county purchasing team is dedicated to finding the best contracting return on your taxpayer dollars. Additionally, the purchasing department is responsible for the tracking of inventory within the county and properly disposing surplus to public auctions. For questions about how to become a vendor and compete for county contracts, or to learn more about public auctions, please contact us at telephone number 915-546-2048.
The 346th District Court Judge Angie Juarez Barred started the El Paso Veterans Treatment Court Program in 2012 for veterans and active service members that have been arrested and charged with a felony or misdemeanor criminal offense. To be considered for this specialty court, the statutory criteria includes be a veteran or current member of the United States Armed Forces, including a member of the reserves, National Guard, or State Guard, and suffer from a brain injury, mental illness, or mental disorder, including PTSD, or be a victim of military sexual trauma, all occurring or resulting from military service. Call Sylvia Serna, Veterans Program Director at 915-546-2119, or email her at scerna@epcounty.com for any information.
Did you know that the County of El Paso's fixed asset control and inventory disposal is handled through the purchasing department? Throughout the course of each business year, the county holds live public auctions to dispose of aged equipment, vehicles, furniture, and other items that are no longer needed. To find out about upcoming auctions or to learn more about the county's inventory disposal process, contact the purchasing department at telephone number 915-546-2048.
Commissioner Andrew Hagerty would like to invite you to his weekly breakfast meeting that takes place every Wednesday at 7:30 a.m. at Danny's Diner located at 4690 Trans Mountain Road. Every week he has a different speaker who will be discussing topics of interest for the community. So if you live in the northeast, west side, or anywhere else in the county, come and join us for the breakfast meeting.
Don't wait in line, pay online. Visit the Financial Recovery Division website at http://www.epcounty.com/budget/financialrecovery.html to make your payments online or find out more about our kiosk locations. We now accept payments on misdemeanor felony and justice of the peace cases.
You can now watch Commissioners' Court meetings on YouTube. Go to youtube.com and search for El Paso County Commissioners or El Paso County, Texas. Subscribe to our channels to see our latest videos.
Did you know that you can save money on the cost of your medications? And doing so is easy. In 2015, the County of El Paso launched a prescription discount card program from coast to coast. The cards are available to all El Paso County residents free of charge and everyone qualifies. You can pick up a card at any county office location, Walgreens, Walmart, CVS, or Target pharmacies, or simply print the card at www.coast2coastrx.com. Happy savings!
Did you know the County of El Paso's purchasing department is responsible for ensuring that all items and services needed by various county departments are purchased in the matter required by the state of Texas? Whether through formal sealed bids or smaller dollar quotations, the county purchasing team is dedicated to finding the best contracting return on your taxpayer dollars. Additionally, the purchasing department is responsible for the tracking of inventory within the county and properly disposing surplus to public auctions. For questions about how to become a vendor and compete for county contracts, or to learn more about public auctions, please contact us at telephone number 915-546-2048.
The 346th District Court Judge Angie Juarez Barred started the El Paso Veterans Treatment Court Program in 2012 for veterans and active service members that have been arrested and charged with a felony or misdemeanor criminal offense. To be considered for the specialty court, the statutory criteria includes: be a veteran or current member of the United States Armed Forces, including a member of the Reserves, National Guard, or State Guard; and suffer from a brain injury, mental illness, or mental disorder, including PTSD, or be a victim of military sexual trauma, all occurring or resulting from military service. Call Sylvia Serna, Veterans Program Director at 915-546-2119, or email her at scerna@epcounty.com for any information. Did you know that the County of El Paso's fixed asset control and inventory disposal is handled through the purchasing department? Throughout the course of each business year, the county holds live public auctions to dispose of aged equipment, vehicles, furniture, and other items that are no longer needed. To find out about upcoming auctions or to learn more about the county's inventory disposal process, contact the purchasing department at telephone number 915-546-2048.
Commissioner Andrew Hagerty would like to invite you to his weekly breakfast meeting that takes place every Wednesday at 7:30 a.m. at Danny's Diner located at 4690 Trans Mountain Road. Every week he has a different speaker who will be discussing topics of interest for the community. So if you live in the northeast, west side, or anywhere else in the county, come and join us for the breakfast meeting.
Don't wait in line, pay online. Visit the Financial Recovery Division website at http://www.epcounty.com/budget/financialrecovery.htm to make your payments online or find out more about our kiosk locations. We now accept payments on misdemeanor felony and justice of the peace cases.
You can now watch Commissioners Court Meetings on YouTube. Go to youtube.com and search for El Paso County Commissioners or El Paso County, Texas. Subscribe to our channels to see our latest videos.
Did you know that you can save money on the cost of your medications? And doing so is easy. In 2015, the County of El Paso launched a prescription discount card program from coast to coast. The cards are available to all El Paso County residents free of charge and everyone qualifies. You can pick up a card at any county office location, Walgreens, Walmart, CVS, or Target pharmacies, or simply print the card at www.coast, the number two, coastrx.com. Happy savings!
Did you know the County of El Paso's purchasing department is responsible for ensuring that all items and services needed by various county departments are purchased in the matter required by the state of Texas? Whether through formal sealed bids or smaller dollar quotations, the county purchasing team is dedicated to finding the best contracting return on your taxpayer dollars. Additionally, the purchasing department is responsible for the tracking of inventory within the county and properly disposing surplus to public auctions. For questions about how to become a vendor and compete for county contracts, or to learn more about public auctions, please contact us at telephone number 915-546-2048.
The 346th District Court Judge Angie Juarez Barred started the El Paso Veterans Treatment Court Program in 2012 for veterans and active service members that have been arrested and charged with a felony or misdemeanor criminal offense. To be considered for the specialty court, the statutory criteria includes be a veteran or current member of the United States Armed Forces, including a member of the Reserves, National Guard, or State Guard, and suffer from a brain injury, mental illness, or mental disorder, including PTSD, or be a victim of military sexual trauma, all occurring or resulting from military service. Call Sylvia Serna, Veterans Program Director at 915-546-2119, or email her at scerna@epcounty.com for any information. Did you know that the County of El Paso's fixed asset control and inventory disposal is handled through the purchasing department? Throughout the course of each business year, the county holds live public auctions to dispose of aged equipment, vehicles, furniture, and other items that are no longer needed. To find out about upcoming auctions or to learn more about the county's inventory disposal process, contact the purchasing department at telephone number 915-546-2048.
...
Commissioner Andrew Hagerty would like to invite you to his weekly breakfast meeting that takes place every Wednesday at 7:30 a.m. at Danny's Diner located at 4690 Trans Mountain Road. Every week he has a different speaker who will be discussing topics of interest for the community. So if you live in the northeast, west side, or anywhere else in the county, come and join us for the breakfast meeting.
Don't wait in line, pay online. Visit the Financial Recovery Division website at http://www.epcounty.com/budget/financialrecovery.htm to make your payments online or find out more about our kiosk locations. We now accept payments on misdemeanor felony and justice of the peace cases.
You can now watch Commissioners Court meetings on YouTube. Go to youtube.com and search for El Paso County Commissioners or El Paso County, Texas. Subscribe to our channels to see our latest videos.
Did you know that you can save money on the cost of your medications? And doing so is easy. In 2015, the county of El Paso launched the Prescription Discount Card Program from coast to coast. The cards are available to all El Paso County residents free of charge and everyone qualifies. You can pick up a card at any county office location, Walgreens, Walmart, CVS, or Target pharmacies, or simply print the card at www.coastrx.com. Happy savings!
Did you know the county of El Paso's purchasing department is responsible for ensuring that all items and services needed by various county departments are purchased in the manner required by the state of Texas? Whether through formal sealed bids or smaller dollar quotations, the county purchasing team is dedicated to finding the best contracting return on your taxpayer dollars. Additionally, the purchasing department is responsible for the tracking of inventory within the county and properly disposing surplus to public auctions. For questions about how to become a vendor and compete for county contracts, or to learn more about public auctions, please contact us at telephone number 915-546-2048.
The 346th District Court Judge Angie Juarez Barred started the El Paso Veterans Treatment Court Program in 2012 for veterans and active service members that have been arrested and charged with a felony or misdemeanor criminal offense. To be considered for this specialty court, the statutory criteria includes be a veteran or current member of the United States Armed Forces, including a member of the Reserves, National Guard, or State Guard, and suffer from a brain injury, mental illness, or mental disorder, including PTSD, or be a victim of military sexual trauma, all occurring or resulting from military service. Call Sylvia Serna, Veterans Program Director at 915-546-2119, or email her at scerna@epcounty.com for any information. Did you know that the county of El Paso's fixed asset control and inventory disposal is handled through the purchasing department? Throughout the course of each business year, the county holds live public auctions to dispose of aged equipment, vehicles, furniture, and other items that are no longer needed. To find out about upcoming auctions or to learn more about the county's inventory disposal process, contact the purchasing department at telephone number 915-546-2048.
...